I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, and we will start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Yes, Gary? And I believe that's covered under master planning and visioning, which is on our agenda.
I don't think it is. It's a question about an ad in the other paper, not about master visioning and planning. I just want to know, is it the board's unanimous position that the existing buildings are at the end of their useful life? Is it a unanimous position? Or is it the position of one person who placed this ad?
It wasn't one person who placed the ad, Gary.
Is it unanimous? Does the entire board believe these buildings are at the end of their usable life?
Okay, so the building is just fully functioning. You just don't think it's worth the cost?
Jerry, we have moved into the territory of master planning and visioning itself, which is-
You spent $1,000 of taxpayer money to run an ad, and you made a statement which is contradicted by a 2008 report of the engineering firm which has designed the new building. I think that's a matter of public interest.
I again cannot speak for the whole board and just for myself, but I understand it to be a term of art that the architects used to mean a building where it is no longer worth putting the money into it because that would be a waste of money, sort of like understanding what it means to total a car.
But you realize in the summary slide in 2018, they did not say what you just said.
I don't suppose we can cover every little caveat and every little-
Every little caveat when they said the buildings are structurally sound and have been well maintained, and the capital improvement project is a good first start in dealing with the issues that face the school.
Again, does this go against anything that I said in answer to your question?
Yes. You and I have a neural net which functions in totally different ways. So we're talking past each other. You're not listening to what I'm saying.
I have.
Maybe I'm not listening to what you're saying.
Maybe.
But this is a matter of great public importance. You've made a statement which the city, the taxpayers have paid for, which contradicts a 2008 report by the firm you hired to design the new building. I think that's of monumental importance.
My very answer contradicts what you have just said.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last-
I say my very answer contradicts what you have just said. It is a term of art that I understand in the way that I've just explained to you.
See, I'm not talking about art. I'm talking about the physical structure of a building and whether it continue to serve to educate students in South Burlington. The current cost to do that for one student entering kindergarten today would be $350,000. That's what the community would invest in that child's education, and I think the schools can do that. It's not a question of art, it's a question of whether the structure of the building can accomplish that task.
A term of art is an expression, and I am comparing it to totaling a car. Do you accept the comparison or not?
So this is on TV, is that right?
It is.
Let the public decide whether this is a debate between art and physical structure. Thank you.
Again, term of art is not art. You're welcome.
Are there any other comments related to items that are not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to any amendments to the agenda. I believe there are no amendments to the agenda unless, David, you have any changes? Do you have one?
I'll do a brief update under my report. I'll just add two other items.
Okay.
One is just a brief weather update regarding tomorrow and Friday.
Yep.
And then also just an update on the water testing. There was some information that was shared in the Burlington Free Press that I want to just make sure is clear.
Okay.
I also wanted to say Delina is here. She's over here to our left, board's left, that is, and she's has a little bit of a cough going on. She's actually not contagious, but she's just removing herself, but I want to, she's over in the dark area of the library, so.
Okay, then, we'll move on to announcements and student representative reports. Delaney and Cole?
So at the high school, SBHS choral singers will be attending the district chorus festival this Friday and Saturday, with the concert on Saturday. And I was selected to receive a scholarship performance, and so I only bring that up, not to toot my own horn, but this is the second year, and we're hoping to get a lot more students to audition into that. And we have amazing news that at the Vermont Allstate Music Festival, we will have an SBHS student who has received the choral scholarship performance, and so that's amazing. And the SBHS Student Council is hosting our annual blood drive February 18th during the school day. Community members are welcome to come donate a pint. We will be doing a pint for a pint, where if you donate one pint of blood, you will get a coupon for one pint of Ben &amp; Jerry's ice cream. I'll let you continue.
I had all of mine written on the computer, and we decided that we had all the same stuff, so. So recently Orchard received a Berlin City Auto Drive scholarship for education valued at $800. The money will be used for books, to use with readers during small group learning opportunities, and there will be a TLC day this Friday and next Friday at the middle school and high school, and there will be an early dismissal next Friday for all pre-K through 5.
And then the midwinter play at the high school is three shows, the high school play that goes wrong, the student-directed, just a stage he's going through, and nothing really matters. And that will be February 13th, 14th, and 15th at 7:00 in the auditorium. And that is all.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
So Cole, I wasn't going to let you get away with not mentioning it. We had prepared, but just the district choral festival, again, that's this Saturday-
Yes.
-at BHS, right? So, perfect.
Okay. Any other announcements, David? Okay, we'll move on to item number six, city and school collaboration.
Yep. Last Friday Elizabeth and I met with Kevin and Helen, Helen via phone, and covered some of the topics. I have a follow-up meeting with Kevin on a couple of the items, one related to the airport and the sound related to Chamberlain, and I have another meeting set up with him this week, Thursday or Friday, I'm not remembering exactly. That would be tomorrow or Friday, on just digging into the impact fee conversation related to the growth that we're seeing and whether or not that can trigger impact fee restart.
Re- and statement, yeah.
I don't know, Bridgette or Elizabeth?
I should have recognized Elizabeth at the beginning of me. I apologize to those who are in the audience here and who are watching. Elizabeth Fitzgerald is on the phone, listening to me, and she could not be here tonight, so I didn't know if Elizabeth, if you had anything else to add on city and school collaboration?
No, we did just have a request from a community member on when the next steering committee meeting was, so David, I assume you're working with Kevin on that?
Correct.
Thanks.
Yes, I don't have the date, though, so.
Okay. We'll move on to item number seven, the superintendent's report.
So I have Rick Markott Central. I just wanted to give you a brief update. Gary has been working on that. I'm just going to just read kind of the status where we are. So One Any Market Street is slightly ahead of schedule. The entrance road condition is good, and the contractors remain really responsive to the road maintenance requests. Again, it has that type of pack on it that has been pretty good, but at times it has had some bumps in it. They've been good to regrade it. All parking lot and school entrances and lighting has been lit, so that has been resolved. And during the February vacation, the contractors are going to install a stormwater pipe. This is the beginning part. They need a couple days to just go under the road, so it will be one-way access during that period of time, just during that two-day during February break, so we just want to let people know. And then update on the Chamberlain. I did have a meeting this week with Gary, actually it was yesterday, with airport leadership, and we discussed the positive sound ventilation, the FAA grant. And as a result of that meeting, we've kind of moved fairly quickly, I would say. We now, LNN, who was the consulting engineer, is, we have a meeting, they actually met today, and we have another meeting coming up with Vermont Gas scheduled for Friday the 7th to discuss the assistance in the project plan. So we're moving ahead fine, and that's where we're at. As far as the weather update, I mean, I think good for people, obviously in the audience or people that are watching. We've got some weather in the forecast for both tomorrow and Friday, and so, you know, tonight we'll be looking at the forecast, and it is not looking great. We've got sleet coming in at the end of the day, so we got snow and then sleet towards the travel time at the end of the day. And then Friday's just got a potential huge amount of snow that's coming, so we'll be watching that. I just wanted to give people a heads up on that. And then the water testing, I wanted to just quickly allude, in the Free Press it came out about how concerned are you about the water? And then within the page, there's a little graph that looks like this, or not a graph, but it's a little pipeline-
Infographic, yes.
Pipeline. And midway through it, it has Guardian exposed calls, calls out South Burlington for poor testing practices. And when I saw that, I felt like, ooh, you know, the connection to the schools was easy because it was a lot about the schools. This is not about us, it's about the South Burlington or the Champlain Water District and the testing. That was what they addressed. Actually, we in 2016, on our own fruition, have done regular water testing, and we did that testing, but it is not us. And so I just want to set that straight, that it was not anything connected to the school. We've been diligent about testing our water and complying to the testing. So I'm working out, working with the Free Press to see if we can get that corrected too, or I don't know to what luck I'll have, but just wanted to make that note.
Great.
Thank you.
So are there any questions or thoughts on the superintendent's report before we move on? Nope? Okay. Next up is item number eight, ends in action, featuring South Burlington High School. So Mike Martin and some students and a teacher are here.
Yeah, so while they're coming up, again, Mike Martin, our director of learning, is coming up, and this again, remember for board members, you have the opportunity in ends reporting, you get monitoring reports on any one of our ends, academic, personal development, citizenship-
Citizenship.
Help me out, I'm-
And lifelong learning.
And lifelong learning, boy.
Long day.
And so part of that is to showcase some of these on a, you know, kind of every other month rotation. So we're happy to have students here, and we're happy to have Mike. We're going to have to move, I think, Bridgette-
Okay, great.
-to just get you into the presentation, but, so thank you. Welcome, Mike, and I know you're going to introduce the rest of our visitors tonight, our guests tonight.
Thanks very much. We just lost our APU that was on until I touched the cable. Try one more time. Something to go up on here?
No, this, I don't know if that's still on.
No, that's not the one, but thank you. Okay. We'll try one more time here. Oh, no. And if I try this, and this is not, it's always the way. Oh, here we go.
There we go.
Good.
Let's touch it.
Got a ticklish cable. Super. So we're really excited to have Christine Lundey here with us tonight from the high school. She is the teacher of our career development center, and so she works with students to launch them into a wide range of internship opportunities, and we think this matches really closely to the indicator under personal development that talks about clarifying goals, aspirations, and post-secondary plans. So Christine will introduce the program, and then we'll have sort of a fishbowl conversation with students, talking about what they, how they benefit from the program.
Thanks, Mike. So again, I'm Christine Lundey. I'm the career development center coordinator for the high school. I've been in this position for two and a half years. I've been working at the high school for 15 years, loving every minute of it. And so as career development center coordinator, I started a new course this year, teaching a new course called internships, and that was built on some of the experiences I had coordinating internships with the picture students when I was an advisor there. And so it was actually midsemester, first semester, so it was around November. We had this activity where the students who had been out in internships came back, I collected them back into the building for a reflective fishbowl conversation like the one you're going to see, and Mr. Burke and Mr. Young happened to come in and witness that, and so it was pretty magical what students had to say about their experiences, and so we wanted to recreate it because we feel it's a really good demonstration of, if you can go back one, of the personal development ends in terms of the ends policy, using self-awareness and interpersonal skills to effectively enhance performance and collaborate with others by clarifying goals, aspirations, and post-secondary plans. And I feel that what you hear these students reflect about in their experiences, you'll see exactly how it connects. So again, it's a new course, and it's all about learning from experts in a field. Apprenticing, that is the simple definition for apprenticing, and while a lot of people will call this alternative education, it's really the original education. That's how, you know, we used to learn things was from apprenticing. So I think it's only natural that students really gravitate towards it and learn a lot from it. The course prepares students for internships in local businesses and organizations. We focus in-class first, preparing students for these opportunities. We do resumes, interviewing skills, professional communication, self-branding, which is a newer concept that kind of marries the idea of reputation and networking, and also giving and getting feedback, which I think is a huge skill that it would be awesome if more people could do that well in the world. So students readiness for placement is determined by how they engage in these preparatory activities. It's how I also figure out what would be a good fit for them and what they're ready for in terms of internships. And we also look for them to demonstrate work readiness skills, which really overlap very well at the high school with our learning practices that we've been tracking more so in traditional classes. And I think that's it. So what this activity looks like is I have some questions on these little strips of paper, and in a fishbowl style, I will give one brave student the talking token to start us off. They will pick a question and answer the question based on their experience, and then they'll toss the ball to one of the other students who can either answer the same question or pick a different one. But before we do that, I'd like the students to take a moment to just introduce themselves and talk about where they intern.
Hello, sir. My name is Mia Harton. I am a senior at South Burlington. My preferred pronouns are she and her, and I interned last year at Champlain Valley Office of Economic Opportunity. It is based actually downtown Burlington, and there they help people with financial problems get better credit, buy a house, you know, they kind of advise them on what to do and how to help them move on with their lives with their financial problems.
Yes, so, hi, my name is Elsa Altov. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a junior, and I interned at the Vermont Dance Alliance and last year, two years ago, and this year I'm interning at the Worthing Library in South Hero.
I'm Julie Johnston. I'm a senior at South Burlington High School. My preferred pronouns are she and her, and I currently have an internship at Inclusive Arts Vermont, and they provide art classes and art showcases for people with disabilities.
I'm Sebastian Rus. I use he/him pronouns. I am interning at Outright Vermont, which is an LGBTQ+ youth support center.
Okay. I think we can do this without a microphone. It's a small enough crowd, if that works for everybody. That works for you? So who wants to start? Okay.
Do you want me to read off the question?
Yep, read the question, yep.
All right, so the question is, did your mentor or someone else at your internship give you advice about college or training? What was it, and did you find it helpful? So during my internship experience, one of the assignments was a mentor profile, where I got to interview my internship mentor and learn about their journey to their job placement now, their education, and even the workplace environment. And so through that, I learned a lot about how everyone in the Inclusive Arts Vermont workspace had a very different background in their education, but yet they had all ended up in the same space. And so that was something that I found very valuable because it just showed me that I can just pursue what I'm interested in in education and still have many opportunities in lots of different places. And so that was probably what I found the most helpful. Anyone want to answer the same question?
I've got a new question.
It said, who would you recommend the internship course to and why? I would definitely recommend this to somebody who is thinking about a career and, but they're not sure, and they kind of want to have experience in it, because I don't think anybody really knows what they want to do until they've actually seen what the job is like and what you have to do and the people you have to work with and those types of experiences. So if someone, you know, is maybe thinking about college, but they're not really sure what they want to do, I would definitely recommend this course so they can maybe get out in the world and have those experiences before they make a decision. Do you want to?
So kind of going off that same question, I think I'd recommend having an internship to anybody, just because sometimes when you're doing one thing, you kind of get in the mindset of that one thing that you're doing, be it a job or school, your day-to-day life. I think that an internship can broaden your horizons and give you more opportunities in the real world, as well as let you see from a different point of view and gain new skills and experiences that you wouldn't otherwise have, you know, learned.
You're going to be able to catch the ball, too, isn't it?
I got, how did your placement inform your future plans? I don't know what you mean by placement.
Your internship.
Okay. Well, I interned at Outright Vermont last year. It was really fun. It was my freshman year, and while I was there, I didn't, I didn't really know then, I still don't have a very clear idea now of what I'd like to do for my future, but while I was there, I met a lot of very nice and very kind people who also, before working at Outright, also didn't know what they wanted to do. And kind of like what you said, it just, you know, no ma-, sorry, no matter what you do, you're going to end up in a place that you will enjoy, and, yeah.
Or just start with something creative.
All right, I'll take the big one. What interpersonal skills did you have to develop or work on in your field placement? And use an example if possible. So in my internship at Inclusive Arts Vermont, it was very important for me to learn how to respectfully talk about people with disabilities and all the language and just thought behind that. And so I think that was a really important interpersonal skill that I didn't even know that I didn't have or really needed moving forward, and so, yeah, that's what I would say was the most important for me.
Building off of that, for me at the Champlain Valley Office of Economic Opportunity, it was phone calls. I have never been someone who was good talking on the phone, and I think it's such an underrated skill, and most of my job was making, helping people make appointments to come in and get that financial advice that they needed. And so a huge part was, you know, being able to talk to someone on the phone and get all the information you need without feeling like inadequate or just kind of just self-worry about what you're talking about. So that was a huge skill that I learned.
How was learning in your internship different from learning in the classroom? Um, let me see, because, so I'm a Big Picture student, and so we do internships as part of our curriculum, but it's different than learning in the classroom because I really get out into the world, whereas sometimes in more conventional classes like math or chorus or something like that, you're stuck in it, you know, behind a desk or at a table, listening to the same people or learning a lot of the same standard thing. And in my internship, I found that not only was I learning a broader range of tools and knowledge and skills, but I also was meeting a lot of different people, and I got to get out into the community more. And I'm from the islands, and so I don't get into Burlington a lot, and so being able to kind of be a part of the broader Vermont community was really nice.
Can I just see the question?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. So being able to learn in my internship meant that it was a completely new form of media that I was learning through. In the classroom, it's often, you know, maybe a slides presentation, like so, reading or watching a video, but being able to work directly with people was something just completely new and a much more interesting way of learning for me. And it also got me interested in other things that I don't think I would have realized I wanted to pursue if I hadn't been working with those people.
I agree.
Do you want to look at the question?
Yeah, sure. If you could use your hand. How was learning in- Molly just came from plate practice, I think, right?
Yes, sorry. I'm in the same show as Elsa, and I had to run some things for a lot of schoolwork. So how was learning in your internship different from learning in the classroom?
If you could just say your name and where your internship was.
I'm Molly. I am still interning at Big Heavy World. I do, I host sometimes, I do coordination, I do social stuff.
Talk about, sorry, what is Big Heavy World?
Um, Big Heavy World is a local Vermont music radio station. We play all Vermont music, but every week on Wednesday nights, we have a live radio show with bands from anywhere. It's a lot of fun. It's all volunteer-based, so everyone there is volunteered and not being paid. It is a nonprofit. Yeah, and we have a lot of fun with it.
Okay, so now you can.
Okay.
Thanks, Molly. How was learning in your internship different from learning in the classroom? Well, for me, I'm someone who likes to be really interactive, and I'm guessing you guys probably touched on this about how it's fun to be like kind of communicating, like you were saying. You know, for me, I think learning in my internship was more putting myself in the adult world and being able to say, you know, I'm independent, which is very different from being in a high school experience, because, you know, you sit in class and you can ask your teacher questions when, all the time, and you can ask, you can work with your peers, but, you know, when you're in an internship, it's like you got to get this work done, and it's not as simple as go ask your leader this right now, like there are different things that prioritize, but it really puts you in a real-world perspective, I think, and I've really enjoyed that because I think it's helped me a lot as a student and as a learner, and I think it's helped me grow and, you know, learn about what the next steps of life are going to be. We have one last question. I'm going to let Molly take it. It's okay. And then if somebody else wants to take it, they can, and then if, maybe if you guys are open to other people asking a couple of questions before we-
Yeah, of course.
Okay, great. Where did you see strong examples of collaboration in your field placement? Wow, well, with a nonprofit, especially with Big Heavy World, you know, it's always volunteer work, so you're always collaborating. You're, this week I was, I had to reach out to Tom Messner, who in my eyes is a, I grew up with him on the weather, so I was like, oh my God, I got to, I got to write this professionally, so I'm collaborating with my college, like cohorts, and I'm figuring out a way to propose this email. And, you know, I think there's always collaboration with Big Heavy because everyone's doing a little bit of each thing, and we're all putting in our best work and our best foot forward to get things done. And so I think the strongest collaboration is, you know, working with everyone of all ages also, so that's been a lot of fun for me. Anyone?
Can I just have a question?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So at Inclusive Arts Vermont, I am not the only intern there. There's different interns from different colleges all across Vermont, and so the Inclusive Arts staff has given this team of interns a, I'm going to say, research list of topics that they're interested in having more of a database of information for. And so together, all of the interns are working towards gathering all this information and organizing it in a thoughtful way, and then presenting it to the staff. So it was really important for us to be able to collaborate effectively and be able to even just scheduling things where we could, you know, fit some time into all of our busy schedules to be able to talk about everything that we've learned.
I'll take it. Um, for me at CBOYO, I, if someone came in and they wanted to buy a house, it wasn't, you know, they just needed to buy a house, it was they needed, you know, to improve their credit, you know, to get a loan to buy a house, it was this step process, and all of the professionals there who were- this step process and all of the professionals there who were, you know, one was a professional in helping, you know, improve your credit and another one was helping get a loan, another one was helping buy a house. So all of them working together to help one client reach their goal was a lot of collaboration that I witnessed and actually got to be a part of. So that was really cool.
Nobody else wants to answer that question? We can put out to any other questions that.
Questions from the board.
Board may have.
So I had a broader question. I'm not sure if for you, I'm just, how many internships, how many, how many students have internships? And has there been a trend over the last few years as far as the number of internships?
Yeah, um, so working, working with Big Picture for over seven years, um, students in Big Picture would have internships Tuesdays and Thursdays and I don't, I couldn't tell you how many students we served that way over the years. It's a fair number. Um, and I loved that part so much that when the opportunity opened in the, um, career development office, I wanted to bring it to more of the, um, traditional school students. Um, and since I've been there, um, my first noticing, um, when I took over the position was that a lot of the internships were serving the district, which is great. And even still, we have a, a fair number that work with schools out, our after-school program and other, um, different, um, parts of our school district. Um, but I really wanted to take what I saw was happening in Big Picture and, and get kids outside of the building a little more and into, um, internships in the community. And now that we have the, um, the course, I feel a lot more comfortable with the vehicles to do that, making sure that they're ready through the preparation in class. And then we have some pretty strong documentation that we use around agreements between the student and the, um, business or organization so that we're sure that our students are going to have a quality experience and that the business's needs are clearly understood and, and put down on paper their expectations. Um, so through the course, last year, uh, last semester, I'm sorry, I had sixteen students. This semester I have five. Um, Big Picture, how many students are interning through Big Picture?
Um, let's see, this year we have around eighteen students, I believe.
I think twenty, not with Sam, actually.
Okay, so tw- around twenty students. Um, I bet at least half of us have internships, so probably around ten kids.
Ten more, yeah, yeah.
I just want to say I appreciated Martin's question because, um, typically this is information that we share, whether it's early college, dual enrollment, internships, online courses, other examples of flexible pathways. We have numbers that are published in our annual report, but until now, we haven't tracked them longitudinally. And so that's something that actually we're working on right now. So when I come back to present the board on, uh, N's metrics, that's going to be one of the data points that I'm gonna propose. We track longitudinally across years so we can see.
So, uh, and a question for the, uh, students. Uh, so how did you either find the internship unless you had like a list from, uh, Mrs. Lundey or how did you pick the internship?
Uh, well, for Big Picture, uh, we did, there was a list that was like a sample list of, uh, possible internships where kids from the past had gone. Um, but me personally, I had known about Outright outside of Big Picture. Um, and I knew that I wanted to work with them. Uh, it's important to me. It's important to my family and friends. Um, uh, yeah.
Um, for me, so for this year, I work at the Worthing South Hero Library. Um, and I've been friends with the librarian there for a while and I also live in South Hero, so it's my local library. Um, and I, uh, have been thinking about if I want to become a librarian when I grow up. So it was kind of like a clique for me. Just, it's local, um, and I know a lot of the people, a lot of the patrons that I serve there. And so that's how it ki- kind of, uh, fit together for me was it just kind of like all the puzzle pieces, pieces came together.
So, so you can find your own, it isn't necessarily just from a list then?
No, you can really, um, pick whatever, uh, at least speaking in Big Picture, uh, yeah. Um, you can pick whatever business or organization that you choose.
Okay.
Yeah, coming from the class, like, um, I kind of went into it thinking like, okay, I think I know an idea of what I want, but that definitely changed and warped originally. I went into it thinking like, I want to go to like a VPR and I want to work with communications and, um, all of this stuff. And then, you know, I, one day I had a really nice and lucky thing happen, which was all due to Ms. Lundey over here. But, um, we had a bunch of, uh, companies come in and do kind of mock interviews to like practice what our interviewing skills. And, um, one of them was Jim Lockridge, who is the head of Big Heavy World. And, you know, he was talking to me about what they wanted. And I was like, this sounds so perfect to what I want. And my mock interview ended up my internship. And I think, um, well, I think, you know, sometimes you, you think you want one thing and it changes. And I think a lot of kids know that because like you go to college and you're like, I want to be a doctor. And then you come out of it becoming like a kindergarten teacher and you're like, that's not what I thought. So I think a lot of it, um, you know, I think a lot of it, every experience is a new one and a one that can be cherished and used to good use.
Definitely.
What about the other two?
Yeah, so, um, I, my internship last year, I knew I wanted to go into some type of finance and, um, for college, but I'd never worked with it before. So I was kind of at the point like, oh God, I don't want to go there and spend all that money to realize I don't want to do this. So we, Ms. Lundey actually really helped me. We did some research on nearby companies that worked with finance and, you know, money and that kind of math stuff because I'm a huge math person. But, um, uh, so we found Champlain Valley Office of Economic Opportunity and I don't know, we've never worked with them before, right?
Um, I don't, I think maybe a Big Picture student might have before. I don't know. I, I had a connection. I've, I've lived and worked in this state my entire life. I have a huge family. I tell the kids, um, I get shunned at parties because I ask people what they do and if they'll take an intern. So my network is, my network is pretty bad and I'm not afraid to cold call. So yeah, we, we made a connection anyways.
We made a connection and, um, I was able to start, I think, like a month after. And I was there for about five months, I think, five, six months. So, um, it was just based on like my interest in what I wanted to do in the future. That kind of sparked where I wanted to go.
Um, in my experience from being in the class, um, after having, you know, gone through the process of learning how to, you know, write my resume and have an interview, um, we kind of began categorizing all of my big interests. And so for me, my two biggest interests are the arts and psychology. And we were lucky enough to find the perfect mixture of that for me, which was Inclusive Arts Vermont. And then we were able to reach out with them. Um, I don't believe anyone had previously had an internship there, so we made a new connection. And so like that's one of the greatest learning experiences for me is being able to learn how to reach out to people that you've never met and make that connection. And then also moving on, students next year and years to come will be able to have that connection of me having been there and hopefully welcoming new students to intern there as well.
Great. Thank you.
Um, I know through my internships, I've come, I've come out with skills that have helped me outside of it and in school. And I'm just wondering if you guys have found certain skills through your internships and if so, what are they?
Time management.
Yeah, I think, so I worked, um, with the Vermont Dance Alliance for a while and I was actually kind of a media coordinator. I was making a lot of posters for them. Um, and because it was kind of a, a really quick turnaround, now I'm really fluent in Adobe Illustrator and I can make a poster in like five minutes. Um, and so it's really, that's helped me with everything. Like I even took that from my old internship and in my new internship, I'm in charge of making posters again. Um, and so I can get those done really quickly. And it also like, on my, uh, internship journey, I've learned a lot of like different communication aspects. Um, one of my internships was more, uh, email-based. And so just learning a lot about how to write emails and how to make phone calls and how to communicate face-to-face with people that you don't know so well. Um, and that was just in a professional manner, um, which was just really interesting. And that's helped me a ton in all aspects.
Adding on to that, I think a part that, you know, has helped a lot is like learning about how to deal with like a difficult situation, you know? Things come up and it makes things hard and you learn a lot through internship, like how, how do I handle this situation? And Ms. Lundey helps you with it in the class, um, which I bet you have a similar experience with. And, you know, that is something that pertains to everything. And it's a big like skill to have is how to handle, um, tricky situations and how to, you know, make sure everything comes out like back, back to how it was.
Yeah. Uh, personally, uh, personally it's phone calls. I recently had to do just a like monstrous list of cold calls to all these schools to check if they had a GSA, which is a, a gay straight alliance. Um, and I had to, uh, quickly learn like on the spot how to deal with schools that like didn't know what that was, didn't know if they had one or like just didn't answer the phone at all. Um, and, uh, yeah, that was something I was really not looking forward to. And by the end of the day, I was like, oh, I got this. No big deal.
Yeah, phone calls is a huge thing, especially in college, which I'm sure you know. And just the whole point of being professional on the phone and in person, I think that's where I gained a lot of my experience from. And that's going to really help me in the future.
Um, so for me, being in some of the inclusive arts art classes, I start the first day of the class without having previously known any of the students. But it's really important for me to just create a completely welcoming environment to them. And so for me, kind of like learning how to come out of my shell and be able to like completely just introduce myself and like open up to these people to make them feel welcome, I definitely, um, have like felt myself improving a lot on that. And I feel like I can meet someone that I've never met before and like, you know, make a good impression of myself, just being able to introduce myself and like, yeah.
And it can even be small stuff, like I learned how to dress business casual for my internship. It was like kind of an undefined thing for me. I was like, what is business casual? So, um, having multiple internships kind of was like, oh, this is going to help me. Like I went for a job interview and, you know, suddenly I knew how to dress business casual and I got the job. So it kind of like pays off.
Yeah, a student and I high-fived this morning in the library because he just got hired from his internship into a paying job. So. I don't, we don't want to take up too much of your time.
I think we're good. I, again, I want to thank you, Mike, for coordinating and for Christine and for the students, uh, giving a little snippet of ends in action. Um, again, great work and, um, keep it up. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for turning the lights back on. Thank you. So we are moving on to number nine, master planning and visioning update. Um, and so I'll just give a brief update. Brian, if you want to jump in, uh, or David, if you want to jump in. Um, the main update is that we're sort of working on communications and, um, and we have another community information night coming up on February the 12th, uh, from seven to nine PM in the cafeteria at the high school. Um, we are working tentatively to schedule another one, um, on a Saturday. We just had some feedback that's hard for people to make meetings in the evenings. So, um, potentially, uh, February fifteenth. Uh, we're just waiting on a couple of confirmations from people. Um, February fifteenth on Saturday morning from ten to twelve. Um, again, at the high school and we're working on childcare for that one. Um, yes.
What time is the February twelfth?
The February twelfth one is from seven to nine PM.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so that's a week from today. Um, and then, um, there are still tours going on for people who are interested. Pat Burke and Carsten are on call on Tuesday and Friday mornings. Um, not on February eleventh, I keep reminding folks, but, um, they have had, um, a few people here and there trickling in to do tours of the high school and that they would like the middle school. Carsten, make sure to be there too. From seven thirty to eight thirty on those mornings, uh, before work if people want to do that. Um, and that is kind of where we are, just working toward, uh, the bond hearing on, um, on town meeting information night, um, which will be part of the whole presentation of the, the school budget and the city budget. And then this bond will obviously have a presentation and, uh, questions and feedback from the community that night as well. So Brian, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, there's the one definite presentation coming up, one likely presentation and otherwise just these regularly scheduled meetings here. So far as I know.
And the twelfth is basically, as you said, is the same as the, the previous, um.
It's a repeat.
It's a review for those that couldn't make it.
Not that people can't come again, but I mean, just if they're thinking of new information, it's, yeah.
Yep. Okay, I'll open it up for questions from the board first. Anything from the board about where we are in master planning and visioning? Okay?
Good.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, my hearing isn't as good as, as some here, I'm sure. But, um, when, when, uh, this young man mentioned, uh, he had a question which seemed valid to me. I could hear it. But the response, uh, from, I, I don't know who you are. I don't, I didn't understand your response. I thought it was a little bit, um, snarky and.
It was not intended to be.
Same thing with you, Bridget. Uh, I, I just felt as if you were being a little bit contentious to a person who had a very legitimate question.
Then I can answer it again if you like.
No, no, and I apologize if you sense that there is contentiousness. I, I, I was mainly just trying to keep us organized so that we were talking about master planning and visioning during master planning and visioning. That was my only concern. So I apologize if that, if that sounded contentious at all.
Well, um, so it, so the, um, the, the subject is over? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 I was saying at the beginning of the meeting, the reason I was trying to move that question to this section of the meeting because it is a warned item on the agenda. It's being covered. The portion at the beginning of the meeting is really to talk about items that are not covered on the agenda. And I felt that this was something that we were going to address in the meeting at the appropriate time. So that was.
We're not, we haven't got there yet.
We are. We're here there now.
There now, okay.
We're there now.
So, uh, if you don't mind repeating it, both of you.
Not at all.
So that I can understand the, um, the answer to his question.
Right. Yeah, so the question was about the specific term that was used in the report, which was the end of the useful life, I think.
And I, actually that is something that I'm concerned with as well because I come into this school and I, I was at your meeting the other night and, um, I don't, you know, I mean, everything's, uh, uh, very sturdy looking, very, very, uh, structurally sound looking. And, and if there's a question as to that it's not, everything needs to be demolished. I think that, um, that's a good question for anybody to ask.
Yeah, it's totally a fair question.
So, so this young man, um, asked about, he saw something in the paper.
Yeah.
Indicating that it's, these buildings are in the end of their useful life.
Yeah.
So, and the answer was something about art?
My answer was, it's a, my answer was it's a term of art by which I mean, it means something specific to the architects. And what I understand it to mean to them is that it would be foolish to put in more money to these buildings now. It's sort of like my analogy was to a car being totaled.
Like a car what?
Like a car being totaled. You know, the insurance term when you totaled your car?
Yes.
And it's judged not to be worth putting more money into because you'd be throwing good money after bad. You have to choose at a certain point when it's time to invest in something new because it does not make sense to put more money into the old thing, whether it's a building or a car. That is my understanding.
Well, if I'm in a house that's in, built in the eighteen hundreds.
Yeah.
Um, and it's looking like this, you know, like these buildings look very nice and they're, they look, um, you know, they're uh, brick and, and, um, concrete walls and et cetera.
Yeah.
Am I gonna, am I gonna take that, my house down because it might need some, some renovations?
Well, I think some renovations is where we get into trouble because the extent of the renovations necessary is one thing that informed our decision. The extent, the extent of the renovations is a multi-year project during which time some of the students are in trailers and some are in the buildings being renovated. We're talking about floors, walls and ceilings being removed, the replacement of plumbing, electrical, HVAC. And so the, yes, the extent of the repairs required, what that would mean and the amount of money it would cost is more than you would expect for renovations and we judged it not to be a good choice.
It seems to me that, uh, if, if you were to throw fifty-five million dollars into these two buildings, you're going to get great renovations. You're going to go way beyond just, um, ser- uh, just surface, uh, things that are useless.
It's not that, it's not that they're useless. It's that they're necessary, the things that would be covered under fifty-five to sixty million dollar infrastructure-focused renovations. The challenge is that those renovations do not address increases in enrollment, um, that we're already seeing and that are projected to continue for the next ten years at least into the future. Um, and they do not address any of the changes, um, in the way we teach students in these schools that have happened since the nineteen sixties when they were built. And that includes. And that includes things like, you know, when these buildings were built, special education students were not part of our student body, they were educated somewhere else or were simply just not included. There, the educational model was very focused on students sitting in rows of desks, you know, being lectured to and that is still a part of the curriculum, but a bigger and bigger part of our curriculum is students working together in a collaborative fashion on multiple group projects, to have all of that in the same square box is challenging. And so breakout spaces and collaboration spaces are important to the educational model. The middle school, these are just examples, I'm not gonna be able to give you the whole forty-five minute presentation um that that we have done in the past uh tonight, but these are some of the things that, you know, when we looked at the extent of the renovations needed, it didn't make sense to not look at what we think we need to educate the kids for the next sixty to seventy-five years in the district at this time. To put that money in now and then find ourselves constrained with capacity or constrained in terms of the model that we're trying to use to educate students in the district a few years down the road, if we if we make a giant investment now, um there's not really gonna be another opportunity for another bite at the apple at some point. So it makes sense to look at it holistically and to do the very best we can to assess what's gonna be needed for the next several decades.
And I guess the one other thing I would add is that we do have um the aforementioned meetings to go over the presentation and after that presentation, our breakout groups. Where if you have specific questions that you want an architect to answer, that you want a building administrator to answer, you can have a one-on-one conversation about that. Because many of my decisions, I won't speak for anybody else, were informed by speaking with the people who know better about these things than I do. Whether they're demographers or teachers or building administrators or architects.
Again, I I was at the last one, I'll probably go to the next one and if there's two more, I'll go to those too.
Yeah.
Because uh during the presentation, um I don't know what other people felt, if if anybody did attend those at all in in this little bit, a few of us. I I felt so many times as if I wanted to ask questions during your presentation and um and uh nobody dared to say anything, I think it was a one-hour thing and I, nobody got up and asked any questions at the time and then I spoke to um Mr. Young and spent time there, but I didn't go to the other sections. Why is it that you choose at the presentations, you have another hour after the first hour? Why don't you take that hour and and uh go get up in the front and take questions?
Uh we've certainly done that at previous.
Would be a little bit more effective because everybody, I'm sure in the audience, had lots of questions, but to just go into one corner and then might miss, you know, you feel as if, well, those people probably asked the questions in their corner already and I, I'm getting into that one later because I was with Mr. Young.
Thank you for that feedback, thank you, we appreciate that, thank you.
I agree. You do, thank you. Maybe you could change your schedule to indicate that um you'll be available upfront for any questions that come along from the audience. And then um then whoever it relates to, that person can answer the particular question that's being asked.
The one advantage that I found to the um the structure that we had was that we could have dozens and dozens of conversations, many more than we could in this.
Good, that's, that's what we wanna hear.
Right, and so that's what was happening, we cannot have as many in the kind of setup that you're describing.
Why?
Because we're having them in about six different areas with about three people in each area.
That's the problem, is because we've, uh you, so you felt the same way.
I felt the same way. Gentleman A might be answering questions on this, person B answering questions on this, and I didn't get to hear both of them. Because they were often separate corners, well, if you took the questions in front of everyone.
Right.
You might not have to answer the same question six times because all six people with that question heard the answer.
Well, I don't mind at all and I think by having more of those conversations, you can get your individual questions answered by whichever expert you want.
Well, thank you, I mean, thank you for the feedback, we appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Young man, that's a question. I'd just like to say, young man, once again. If I had never come to any meetings, I knew nothing about this project. Now I read a statement which said that existing buildings are at the end of their useful lives. I think a reasonable person would conclude that buildings must have serious structural deficiencies, okay? Let's be honest, that's a very flammable statement. Term of art, you can call it whatever you want, the wording of that statement would lead someone who knows nothing about the situation to conclude that the buildings have serious structural deficiencies. I don't think that's the case, you need electrical upgrades, yes, you need HVAC upgrades, yes, you need sprinkler upgrades, yes, you can go down the list. But none of them, in my mind, say the buildings are at the end of their useful life, okay? So I've just offered my point as a young man, offering his thoughts, and we can move on.
Thank you.
And I thank you for the.
Anyone else?
I was not able to make the first meetings, the other meetings you have coming up, we'll go through the presentation of where you feel what buildings need to, why we need to have these.
Yes, so so a week, yes, a week from tonight and Saturday the fifteenth. And then you're also welcome to do drop-in tours.
Right, I'll try to do that if I get a chance. One question I did have is um has it been thought about breaking this up so it's not twenty-five million now for, do the high school first and then ten years from now, pick one of the two schools and break it up a little bit so it's not such a big potential hit on, but it's already a fairly hefty tax.
Yeah, that's a great question, um we have, and we've had that question a few times and and the thought process there is that by building the two buildings together, we get the efficiencies of having one infrastructure system um for the two buildings, it's really difficult to do that if you do one first and then add on the other one. So that's one, one significant consideration. The other one is that whichever part we delay, um construction costs are going up by about five percent a year, four, somewhere between four and six percent a year, but the experience in Vermont's been about five percent a year. So whichever portion we delay is gonna be significantly more expensive ten years from now than it is now. So to do them now while interest rates are low, um rather than wait until interest rates potentially get higher than they are now and to wait another ten years of construction inflation, uh we end up paying more for the same features in the building versus doing them all at one time. It also increases the disruption um to, you know, students and staff to sort of spread things over numerous years as opposed to doing this. The way the current project is proposed, it would be three years and eight months of construction of the buildings and then another about nine months of reconstruction of playing fields and demolition of the existing buildings. And that is pretty much the tightest timeframe um possible in terms of the least amount of disruption to the academic programs especially that we're, that we're trying to operate on a pretty tight site for the number of students that we have. So so there, those are some of the thoughts behind why we're trying to do all of it at once.
Say, Marissa, I'll give you the presentation.
Sure.
There is a lot of information also online, um I think it's definitely better to come to the presentation, but if you go to our our school website, there's a lot of information, you can see some past uh presentations, you can get a variety of information or from there as well.
And you can definitely write to us and we can point you to the website or answer a specific question or tell you when the meeting is or whatever, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, there's also a very good Facebook site that is giving some other information, I'll get you the information later.
Yes.
Has any, has any um effort been made to try to figure out how to perhaps, if if you wanted to make the two, you know, demolish these two buildings and get your new schools, is um to to try to make to to try to get the funds from another, other sources other than taxpayers? There's not, you know, I consider South Burlington rather small, it's not a big city. And the tax base is is only maybe seven thousand um units, houses, condos, seven thousand total. And to expect three hundred forty-five million dollars to be placed on only seven thousand structures just doesn't seem right to me. I mean, over the course of thirty-two years, so anybody who is selling their home here in South Burlington is selling the the um the tax implications as well for thirty-two years, that's that's generations long, I, that I don't understand.
It is, and I think it's also a generational investment and you're right that it's a huge amount of money over a long amount of time. I think this project is gonna make people want to come here, I mean, can I say that for sure? No.
That could be, except for, is there any other way to pay for it other than to stick it on?
Yeah, not, not right now, again, not right now, I think there's pretty active conversations with amongst our our education leaders and the legislators to come up with a funding mechanism um in the future um that will help support school construction. Again, other states have different mechanisms for doing that, but again, you know, when, when I went to school, you know, I walked into a fairly new school in Burlington, right? Back in the sixties. And you know, there was um some mechanisms on helping that and that stayed in play for a while. Vermont had some school construction aid but has gone away. Why it's gone away, I'm not really sure, I don't really know what was the reason for that. Again, it was only for new construction, it was never for maintaining your structures, it was a thirty percent new construction aid. And we think it's important that uh the conditions and the facilities of our of our educational um facilities get get addressed. We have a lot of our schools that, you know, brick and mortar are probably okay for the most part, it's a lot of the other things that haven't been paid attention to. Again, we're in a district that we've been trying hard to pay attention, some of you in the room know, we've had some, we've worked hard at having a stewardship plan and addressing our our roofs and all of those things. That's unfortunately not been happening on an ongoing basis throughout the state of Vermont and we're
Noticed.
We're, we're in some, you know, other schools are in in some trouble and so um the hope is, is that there will be some funding um in the foreseeable future to help offset that.
But to answer my question, there has
Not right now.
Other, there have not been other um thoughts as to how else to get the money besides?
I would say there's some thoughts, but first, you know, we 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 need to be truthful with the community, you folks and
There simply aren't state or federal programs right now, there are not state or federal programs right now that are available to us as South Burlington right now.
How about um alumni, you know, asking alumni for?
Yeah, that, that certainly could come into play, once again, once the the voters, you know, come and and give a, give an answer to moving forward. There have been, as you know, we've had things that have been gifted to the district over the years through fundraising, um right? And so we would, yep, well, that has been part of it with the the turf field, um Mr. Munson granted, you know, the the gift of the turf field back um several years ago now and gave money, uh close to a million dollars to make that happen. So we, we again would go back out and do that, um but again, to do that before you get an affirmative vote, uh hasn't been explored.
Assuming that you get a no vote in March, will you then be exploring the upkeeping of these buildings or will you continue to push for doing new buildings? What are your current plans?
We don't have a current plan, we will have to assess what the feedback is from the voters once we have it and then we will have to make a new plan.
Yeah, and as far as taking care of these buildings, again, we, even even with a positive vote, we have a period of time, we need to continue to care for the building. Uh as you've read and heard, we've, we've tried to be smart about um making some decisions on bigger, bigger needs in in both the high school and the middle school. The elementary schools, we're gonna be doing a roof project on on two of them this summer. Those are all in play, part of our stewardship plan and we would continue to do that, we need to make sure that right now um that the schools are ready and available for for, you know, teachers to teach and students to learn, so we're, we would have to keep that in, obviously we get a positive vote, then we would curtail that, that, any big, big items and make sure that we can get through the period of time before the the students would then move again if there's a positive vote. If not, then we gotta ramp that back up and we've gotta address some of those phase one components or figure out from the board what direction they wanna go, if they wanna, you know, go a different direction or just wanna, you know, uh continue on as is. Uh the as is is not an option, we have some big things we need to, we need to start to address, even though you don't see it, you know? We have some things that we have to address uh in the building because we don't want them, we don't want the building to become in a place where they're not able to be occupied uh for teachers to teach and students to learn.
Yes, and the teachers are a big component of students' learning as well as things to have the students ready to learn.
That's right.
Which are not always a very fancy building.
Are there any other questions or feedback?
Well, you mentioned Chamberlain a little while ago and and I, it might have been a totally separate issue, but um I, I'm wondering if Chamberlain, you're kinda, I've been hearing about Chamberlain being demolished for the last few years relating to the F thirty-fives when they came, when the, now they're here and the children are listening to the F thirty-five noises and it's very, very difficult for them. I know there was a time when you were talking about uh demolishing uh Chamberlain, is that still in the works? Are you waiting for this to to um, you know, get over with first to to, before you um have the the residents start hearing about how Chamberlain needs lots of school, lots of um money?
No, in fact, this.
For demolition.
We have been working very hard on Chamberlain, David's been giving regular updates on Chamberlain. There is grant money from the FAA um that is available for putting a positive ventilation system in Chamberlain, which means that it would be more soundproofed than it is. We've done a lot of noise testing both on our own dime and on the dime of the FAA, different kinds of sound testing to make sure that levels are within acceptable ranges within that building, both with the windows open and with the windows closed. And and basically the recommendation after that sound testing is that the noise levels are at acceptable levels if the windows are closed and students are inside, so the idea would be to put in an appropriate ventilation system that allows, you know, learning to continue at Chamberlain. The board um had made a decision back in two thousand seventeen, was it two thousand, no, it was December of two thousand sixteen, in fact, we made a resolution with regard to the wrap-up of the master planning and visioning task force that focused on the elementary schools, that we would continue to get regular updates on various issues at the different schools. So um the um the enrollment at Orchard was one of our biggest concerns because that enrollment was growing.
The what?
Enrollments, the number of students at Orchard. The um, the development of city center around uh Rick Marcott School and the the F thirty-fives and the noise situation at Chamberlain and David's done a good job of continuing to update us on that. In that same set of resolutions was a pivot to sort of monitoring those issues, making sure that we had contingency plans if something happened at one of those schools to change, but that at the time, we did not believe that the community wanted us to consolidate those schools or to close any of them so that we would keep them open and monitor them and until there was some sort of threshold issue that made us need to reopen discussions that we would not and that we would focus first on the middle school and high school, because those during the master planning and visioning, even though the master planning and visioning was primarily focused on the elementary schools, the discussions with the community were really about the needs at the middle school and the high school. And so that, that set of resolutions was done in December, I believe, of two thousand sixteen. And so that's the process that we've been working through, that's why the phase one study that focused on infrastructure and the existing conditions at the middle school and high school happened and that's why the phase two study that focused on things like capacity and educational model and all of that happened um over the past two years. And um and that really came out of those discussions back in two thousand sixteen. So for Chamberlain, that, we know that there is FAA grant money, you may have missed the part of the meeting earlier where David was talking about. The challenge has been that they require a ten percent match um for whatever that money is from the community. David has been working both with the airport, Vermont Gas, some other places, um because we don't believe it's right that a community should have to, you know, put ten percent toward a grant to address a challenge that's being caused by something that's happening at the airport, which is out of our control. So David's been working very hard, lots of meetings and communications, he and Gary Marcus, our director of operations and financial management, um have been working on that. David's been working on it for years, Gary for the last sort of year and a half since he's been on board. So we are, we're working to address those challenges at Chamberlain um using grant funds.
What I would say is that um the F thirty-fives are here and we continue to ask, you know, through our administrative leadership and any questions that are coming in. Obviously, it's up to us to make sure that the sound levels are appropriate.
Sure.
But we're also monitoring complaints and we've, we've not had, we've had one complaint. Again, albeit the windows are primarily closed at this point in time, we know that they'll open in the, in the spring and we're trying to be prepared so that we can um, you know, have the opportunity to have what they call positive ventilation, which is um a condition, uh an air conditioning system, it's not air conditioning, but it's an air conditioning, it takes out the moisture and uh, so it's a whole, whole new system that they're proposing to address that, allowing us to keep the windows closed, um so that would help uh ensure that instruction isn't interrupted. Again, we've been living with this, I think as Bridgette said, we've had the F sixteens and or airport, airport traffic, helicopter, other planes, other, the fighter jets that have been there and we've, obviously, the Chamberlain community has been dealing with it for a long time and um this we think will be a positive, uh positive next step. And this, we think, will be a positive, positive next step. So where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 10, Budget Communication Plan.
So I think we're, again, we've been fielding some questions from folks that have either been calling in or writing emails, and we've been responding to those. I think next step is we've got our, as you said earlier, Bridgette, we've got the March 2nd meeting. Again, if people have questions about the budget as it pertains to master planning and visioning, obviously, we have the upcoming meetings, both the 12th and the 15th, the Saturday, including the 2nd. And again, we're open for other questions related to budget and certainly happy to take calls or emails for anybody who has questions about that.
And we have the budget book. There's a link to the budget book on our website right now. So the full budget book as opposed to just the summary that's been shared in our meetings and things. If people are interested, it has both the city and the school budget information in it.
The pre-town meeting that March 2nd will essentially go over, you know, a lot of the same, the budget presentation that is posted online. If anybody who hasn't had the opportunity to view it, they could view it and certainly either email us or call us, call for questions. We'd be happy to answer them.
Any other thoughts? Item number 11, Negotiations Update. I'll give a brief update. We had our second meeting with the SBEA, the Teachers Union, on Monday night. We exchanged proposals with them. We have a schedule of three more confirmed meetings on the books over the next seven or eight weeks and another additional potential meeting that we're just trying to nail down. So we're moving forward negotiations with the teachers. Martin, I don't know if you want to say a word about the support staff? We're not, there's not really
We're kicking off discussions with the support staff next Monday. So it'll be initial meeting to talk about ground rules and scheduling.
What year are we dealing with in terms of contracts?
We are talking about next year and beyond. So we're talking about the FY '21 and then potentially '22 and '23. That's what we're talking about. Negotiations kicked off a little bit later than they have in past cycles because we needed to wait for the outcome, the arbitrator's ruling on the Act 11 Commission. So the Act 11 Commission is the statewide commission that was negotiating a statewide healthcare plan for all school employees. And so we needed to understand what the contents of that settlement were, in this case, an award. The arbitrator ended up having to make an award because the two sides couldn't really come to terms. So the arbitrator by law had to choose one side or the other, their proposal in its entirety. So we had to wait for the outcome and some of the discussions after that to make sure we knew what we were dealing with in terms of potential budget increase on the healthcare side before we started negotiations with the school staff in the three different unions. So that's where we are.
Is the duration of the contract up for discussion?
It is up for discussion, yes. Yes, it's been a bit of a challenge, I would say, for both sides, that the past two cycles have been pretty proscribed by the state level. So the contract before the one that we're in this year was a two-year contract by mandate, really. I mean, it could have been shorter, but it could be no longer than two years because the governor had said that he wanted to really have a statewide healthcare policy in place. And so he sort of said that all contracts had to stop as of June 30 of 2019. And then the last go-around, we were told the same thing, that everything had to end as of June 20 of 2020 because the assumption was that the statewide healthcare plan would be in place. And so that's where we find ourselves now. Now there's, as far as I know, there's no constraint on what we can do in terms of the length of a contract. So it's really up to the parties at the table to determine that. So that's where we are with negotiations. Item 12, Other Paper Articles. I think there is a list. We're scheduled out a little ways, so I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts to add or any changes to this schedule. So Brian has an article that will run
This week?
This week, tomorrow.
Yep.
And it will talk about master planning and visioning. And then the next one is, I believe, it looks like it's David Young and Mike Martin on SBAQ results. So just to put one more thing on your plate, unless you feel like you need to reschedule that. I don't know where we are in terms of, in terms of your workload and mics and whether that's
It's on there.
Still possible? Okay.
It's a problem. I'll let you know, but it's on there.
Okay. And then we have Alex talking about voting outcomes, and that would run in the April 2nd issue. And then we have Delaney talking about mental health in the May 7 issue. And we have Martin talking about 180 Market Street in the June issue.
I'd love to have been here.
I think that's, I think that's absolutely true. As you get for not coming the last time.
I would suggest that we may make that into a legislative update as far as
Okay.
End of session and
Trying to self-plagiarize and, you know, use the stuff that you're writing other places for your school board article? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, only if you want to hear about the reformatting of our criminal code. But I don't think that's, that better not be relevant.
Hopefully not. Okay. Great. Unless anybody has any other great ideas for summer issues, I think we can probably set that one aside for now. So moving along to item 13, Set the Agenda for the February 19, 2020 Meeting.
The only thing I need to add in here is the calendar, our 2020, 2021 calendar.
Okay.
So, and I would put that for action. We have a CVSA meeting, and that's the Champlain Valley Superintendent's. We have to approve a regional calendar. And then I would be bringing our calendar, including the days in which we've communicated to you about either late starts and early dismissals embedded on that calendar. So I'll be working to get that out. Again, first, we've got to approve it at the Champlain Valley Superintendent's Association. Administrators have a little bit of work on our end, but we'll, I'd like to have it on here because I know we're getting a fair amount of questions about
Yeah.
People wondering about, hard to believe, but next year, you know? Yep, so.
Yeah, it does usually seem like we talk about that calendar. I have this strong memory of talking about it the day after town meeting pretty much every year.
I know. We haven't, this would be earlier, this would be slightly earlier.
Would it be earlier?
Yeah. I mean, Delaney reminds me that we've typically been kind of even March or April, but we're getting a fair amount of questions about that. So if we can do it that, I'd like to put that on there as a
Okay.
Yep. Other than that, I think we are good.
Okay.
So is that the school district calendar or the school board calendar?
The school district calendar. So usually sort of April, March or April timeframe, we find, usually we have a discussion about it and then usually another, the meeting after that, we usually end up kind of approving it. So yeah, we're trying to get on the books. We already had questions from parents about, you know, when is school starting in the fall? I was like, yeah.
Yeah, as far as the school board calendar, you're right. Well, that, we usually do have a, you know, we have that that gets posted, but that usually doesn't happen until, you know, towards the end of the school year, start of the summer, we kind of plot that one out.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other thoughts for the February 19 meeting? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is item 14, Future Agenda Items. Did you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I have thoughts. I think it would be good to just try to set some dates on some of these. Some of you folks may have particular ideas around when you'd like to hear some updates, and we can figure out if there are some things here that are time-specific that you'd like.
I mean, I believe specifically PBGRs were mentioned as maybe happening earlier, right?
Yeah, yeah, I've been thinking about that, especially because I would really like PBGRs to be discussed when families are still in town. I'm a little worried if we wait until July that we might not get enough feedback from folks on that one or feel like they've had a chance to be heard about their thoughts on it. So if we could potentially move that one up into May or
Okay.
April, someplace before the end of the school year
Yep.
Would be ideal.
Some of these I think I can probably do in, or the administrators with me can do some updates on for you in kind of like my report kind of thing.
Yeah.
But some are maybe, you know, again, bus driver and staffing, you know, where are we at with that? That can be kind of a, I think I can report out on that pretty quickly for you.
Okay.
Some are more lengthy, but I don't know if there's any here that you had specific desires. We talked about the PBGRs being before, earlier than July. If there's others here, again, the non-union support staff manual, for example, you know, we've, we're working on that and we want to make sure it's out. It will also be reported in 2.2 Treatment of Staff, which is coming up in March or April, so.
So why don't we strike federal and state education policies from here? I mean, we actually do that on an as-needed basis. Like PBGRs are, that's, that's a state policy. And so that's a holdover from a long time ago.
Yeah, probably, Martin, you're right.
I just don't think that we need that one.
I just don't
Just so we can say we removed one.
I was going to say, I think
I just don't know what, if the board, again, in general, board awareness of, you know, Title 16, you know, from the state perspective, you know, what governs education? I think most of you probably do know.
Goodbye, Elizabeth.
Goodbye, Elizabeth. We just lost Elizabeth Fitzgerald, I believe, or we will, oh, it's just, it says I have 10% battery left, but that was just warning me that we will lose Elizabeth.
I'm still here.
Bye, Elizabeth.
All right, we can't assign anything to Elizabeth.
Yeah, it would have been, actually, probably had to run effective public hearings might have been a good one to have on the agenda before town meeting information night.
I think, I think actually it's trial by fire, it's education through doing. So I think we can strike that one, too. We'll, you know, we'll get back together and see how it went.
Well, again, the point of this was to just get some, if there's some date specific that you want. I mean, I, again, we have an obligation to try to get these updated. I think everybody's been pretty busy
Yes.
To get anything additionally done right now, but we can start to get these in front of you. And some of them, I think, are easier to report out on or to provide you information on.
Yeah.
Some are more lengthy.
But like how to run, like how to run effective public hearings, for example, feels like that one might be a good one for like the board work session. You know, we always have this board work session, you know, sometime in the March or April timeframe that's a little bit more casual, it's a public meeting, but it's a little bit more focused on sort of the work of the board, like a little bit more introspective. So maybe
A retreat.
When we had talked about this, I think there was a specific person that Elizabeth had in mind, or there was someone who might be able to come and talk to us about it.
Well, again, I think you have some resources. Again, you have your legal resources, McNeil, Letty and Sheehan, you know, not to go too deep into their organization, but you know, there could be, just again, from the legal perspective, how to do that. And then you also have like Nicole Mace with McNeil, Letty and Sheehan could probably give a nice little snippet of how to effectively do that. That could be a nice little, again, I don't think it would be very long, but the board might appreciate that perspective with some
Somebody from Community Justice Center. That's where this one originally came from
Came from, yeah.
Was the recommendation during the rebel controversy as far as having somebody help with that kind of a community discussion.
Okay.
It's a little bit different kind of discussion. Well, not really, but
Not really, yeah. There are elements that are different, but yeah, similar. Okay. Should we move along?
Mm-hmm.
All right, item 15, Consider the Minutes of the Meetings of January 15, January 20 and January 27.
Do I do them one by one?
Sure.
Yeah, there's a January
There is a January 22 meeting.
Yeah, it's 27, 22.
Three, four, four sets of minutes.
Yes. So should we just take them in order? January 15th, did anyone have any comments on the January 15th? This was a special meeting at 6:00 PM that was really to talk about the budget and get the budget approved. Did anybody have any comments on these minutes?
No.
Okay, seeing none. How about the minutes of January 20? So the minutes of January 20 was the negotiations subcommittee, so there aren't a whole lot of minutes because it basically just alludes to the fact that we checked to see if public was there. There was none, and we went into executive session and then came back out. So I had no update to that. Anyone else? Okay. So those minutes are approved. The 22nd, which was our regular school board meeting, our last regular school board meeting. Any comments on those minutes?
I have a question on page two under the Chamberlain School of Education. In the last full paragraph, third sentence is, "The construction firm picked their recommendation but did not provide the cost to the district." I wasn't sure that what that was referring back to, what the recommendation was.
Yeah, so the construction firm, that was L and N.
Okay.
They provided a recommendation, but they didn't provide any cost. That's a true statement.
Oh, so they made a recommendation?
They made a recommendation that they would go with option one, I think it was, but there was no, there was no cost. I just wanted to make, I mean, that was my point in that particular
Gotcha.
Component.
Okay. January 27, again, another negotiations subcommittee.
So I was out at 9:30, not 10:50.
9:30, okay.
You know, minor, but
Paddling hours.
Had another meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Pad my hours in here. I just messed up.
I believe this set the session agenda adjourned at 11:39 AM, not PM.
11, which one, which were you? Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, gotcha. Yeah, on the very
It might have felt like 11:39 PM.
Yeah. Okay.
All right then. So those minutes are all approved with that small change. Item number 16, Accounts Payable Orders Number 27 and 28. Were there any questions or comments from the board on those accounts payable orders?[1780.87]